First item is roll call.
Alderman Beebe, here. Alderman Headley, here. Alderman Stelly, here. Alderman Shaker, here. Alderman Totten, here. Alderman West, here. There is a form for that.
Okay, next item then is discussion of the 2012 proposed budget. I will turn it over to Alexa to announce it.
All right. Thank you. First of all, I thank the board for your time this evening and as it took us a little bit of time to get the entire budget to you, I had some great questions that have come back to me though and we're going to just get started with this. As a preface to this process, wanted to make sure that everyone did in fact see the summary letter that was attached at the front of the document that talked about the process that we followed in-house and gave a brief summary and overview of the budget department by department. And before we might write into things, wanted to share with you that the department heads were a great source of information that were very helpful. There was a lot of vigilance involved in looking at comparisons of budgets over the last three years as to expenses, as to how revenues were set, how actual revenues were seen. We wanted to make sure that the revenues that we had estimated actually we will release. So without further ado, if you want to go ahead and get into the details of it, want to be able to talk about kind of an overview process in talking regarding our approach. Want to talk about revenues and then want to look at personnel and then we'll look at all the other expenses which are contractual commodities and capital items. So if you're ready to get started.
Is it on?
Yeah, just hit the button on top.
Sorry. When we looked at revenues, we looked at performance over the last three years. Wanted to make sure that what our forecasting was that was actually achievable. And as I stated in my letter, the 2012 proposed budget represents a continuation of thoughtful spending and projections that started earlier this year when your interim city administrator, Mark Pence, sat down with Kathy and you will be finding a true-up to the 2011 budget coming to you on the 5th of December's meeting. We'll be bringing those items to you that talks about revenues that needed to be lowered, associated expenses that were lowered in order to make sure that 2011 had a balanced budget. That actually has already occurred. We're waiting until closer to year end to make sure that our expenses are accurate as to what will actually be looked at for the full year. And that's why you're not seeing it in front of you this evening. It'll be about a week or so out to make sure that those numbers are a little closer to accurate. So when looking at revenues, we looked at a three-year history and then looked at what was benchmarked, how we were meeting those projections. We also took a look at those revenues that are going to see a pretty large impact this year. And I tried to share that with you a little bit under transportation. With the new 2010 census data, it impacted funds that received the state motor fuel tax as well as the state vehicle sales tax. And those have vast increases because we've seen an increase in our population. So that's good news for transportation. Also, one of the items that you'll be seeing later this evening, you heard the first reading on it last or two weeks ago regarding Gatsby 54 policy. This is, in general, is a policy that sets the amount that you need to set into reserves and that is set by the governing body. And this governing body at the recommendation of staff and myself is to set that amount at approximately 25 percent. I will let you know that that is, two of the funds are not quite there and that is the Park Fund and the Transportation Fund. And our approach to that will be to continue to set reserves aside for those two areas so that we can try to meet our benchmark as set in Gatsby 54 to get those reserves in Once we had all of those revenues in place, for me, it's very difficult to set your budget until you know how much money you have to spend. So once we felt that we had fair yet conservative revenue numbers, I think it's really important to note that you want to make sure that your revenue numbers are accurate, yet Kathy and I both had a tendency to go to the side of conservative. We'd rather make sure that we have enough money instead of overshooting our revenues and then you overshoot your expenses and then you end up getting yourself a little backward in your budget and then your spending. So we feel that our revenue dollars are close to accurate yet on the conservative side. And with that, it took us into expense side. One of the, a couple of the areas, and I'll stop right there and find out if you have any questions about revenues.
Are we going to talk about individual items?
Yes. If you want to talk about individual items as it relates to revenues, now would be a good time to do that.
Okay. Under the general fund revenue, number 40010, real estate and property. If you look at the 2011 actual of $316,985 and the budget for 2012 is $830,000 for a difference of $513,015. Why is there such a difference in the two?
Well, part of it is that we've not received items, the actuals, the 2011 actuals go to the first week of November. And when you see real estate and property, those, you probably didn't receive your statement from the county until the end of October, first part of November. So the vast part of your real estate and personal property won't come in until the end of the year.
So is that the case then with all of these line items?
Correct. Correct. With all the property tax line item. The majority of that money comes in the end of November, December where people start getting their property tax bills and start paying them payments. And then, and that's why that one has such a vast difference. Some of the rest that you have underneath there, they have a difference but they're not as vast as that one is. And the reason for that difference is because this, the 2011 actual really shows a full 10 months versus 12.
Some of those franchise fees come in two and three months. For example, your natural gas, that comes in quarterly, so that's only three quarters of the year. The fourth quarter will come in in January but we record it as 2011 revenues. The other franchise fees are all two months behind. That's why they show such a big difference. The majority will come in after the fact but we make an entry to record it because it is in fact 2011 revenue.
I know, I know that the 2011 year, said year-to-date actual, but I think that had a little bit better explanation of what that really represented would have been very helpful in putting, trying to do comparison.
As of November 9th, pardon me. At the top of these worksheets, it says that from November 9th, we might have wanted to make that clear.
We'll make a note of that and put that down for future reports.
May I add one question? How much effect do you think we're going to feel with the foreclosures that are going on with some of the homes? I know like on my street alone, we had houses sold way below what they were valued at previously. And I'm just curious, how much effect is this going to be on our budget?
You'll see more of an impact on personal property than you will real estate. When a property is foreclosed upon in real estate, there's still a responsible party and that is the bank. So they are still responsible for paying those taxes?
Okay. So then we should notice something about that?
You might notice a slight decrease depending on what the percentage of payment is on personal property, but I shouldn't expect it to be, have a large impact.
Okay.
Any other questions about revenues? If not, we'll go on and talk about personnel. Under personnel for this year, there are five areas that I wanted to talk to the board. The first item is to discuss exempt versus non-exempt. All the department heads and myself sat down and Jamie, has this memo been passed out? You'll have a memo on your desk dated today that talks about the following changes that were made to the City of Grand Valley's organizational chart. Within that is the exempt versus non-exempt that I was talking about. For now, let's go ahead and start at the top of this memo. The GIS IT individual was moved from administration to the community development department. Community development is probably a new name. You've been used to referring to the director of public works. That public works is not really a true title that impacts the true amount of work that Ryan is doing in the department that he covers. So I would like to change the name of that department from public works to community development that will oversee sub-departments such as public works, transportation, planning, engineering, zoning, codes enforcement. So all of those departments will then fall underneath community development and then more aptly describes the work that Ryan is doing. In addition, the human resources and city clerk will become a department director and we'll go more into that in just a little bit. Codes and inspections is merged with planning and engineering within the public works department. At some time, probably in the near future, within the next year, we'll be looking to that department and calling it planning and zoning. The director of administration of the police department is changed to police department operations manager. This is more in line with other job titles that we already have within the system. There's an operations manager currently within public works. We thought it appropriate to go ahead and change this to police department operations manager. Standardizes the title more. There's no change in salary now. The court administrator deputy city clerk position will no longer be the deputy city clerk. She will instead focus her time on court administration. The administration department and city clerk human resource department will share an executive administrative assistant and deputy city clerk. This position, I'm looking to reorganize the community development area. It currently has two full-time and one part-time administrative assistant. I'd like to merge the work downstairs and they will have two full-time administrative assistants, take that part-time individual and bring that person upstairs and make it a full-time position that would assist Jamie and I. And then the last part is the following five positions will change from non-exempt which are, sometimes people refer to as hourly, to exempt positions which are salary status. And that's the court administrator, public works operations manager, the building official, utility building supervisor, and assistant to the director of parks and recreation. And Jamie, if you don't mind at this time, I'd like to talk about under the Fair Labor Standards Act, the criteria that we follow to determine these positions to go from non-exempt to exempt.
Sure. There are a few areas that you can determine exempt versus non-exempt status in a public sector. The role that we went by in a majority of these changes are an administrative role in an official capacity that makes executive decisions, that has to take charge and take lead, and I'm paraphrasing of course, on certain areas in their, in their job duties. And based on that criteria that the federal government puts out, we determine that a majority of these individuals could obtain exempt status based on their role in the state. And that would include the court administrator, the public works operations manager, our building official, and our utility building supervisor, actually the assistant too. The building official is a question because they are in the field, but there's also a blue collar caveat to that FSLA status of exempt. And that is, that if they do have an administrative role, that is a decision-making status out in the field as well as within the organization in the office, then they can also attain exempt status. And in reviewing each job descriptions, we determined that these individuals had that authoritative, authoritative status based on a majority of them too because they supervise individuals. So that's how we determined.
Is there any regulation on the salary to non-salary? Because, I mean, I've been in the positions of being salary, which I myself ended up working 60 hours a week instead of the 40, which was fine. That was my, I took the role very serious. But I also know of some that became salaried and somehow or another ended up working only 20 to 30 hours. And I'm just curious, is there any protection against that type of situation even though they make decisions?
Sure. In the state of Missouri, we are an at-will organization and the employees in our organization are at-will. If they are not achieving the duties that are given to them in their job titles and their descriptions, they are subject to our handbook which has a process for discipline. And in following that process, it includes if they are not achieving the duties that they are assigned, they can be disciplined on that.
Well, I understand the achievement, but I mean, if, I want to be sure they're achieving it, but you're putting in at least close to 40 hours a week.
We have annual evaluations that every employee is subject to and the supervisors are responsible for evaluating those individuals and it's their duty and their obligation to look into each employee and see if they are actually fulfilling their roles in every way, including working the hours that they agreed to when they attained full-time status.
So they won't be signing the time card?
Exempt employees and non-exempt employees in our organization do sign the time card. Excuse me.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
I'd like to go a little bit further into talking about the personnel changes. There are two that in particular that are pretty big changes and that is the role of city clerk to include functions of human resource director. As the board may be aware, city clerk has served as a function as a, as a human resource assistant or a human resource coordinator. In this situation, we would look at changing that to a full-time director status. Within the cover letter that I provided for all of you as a summary, I'm going to go through it just briefly and talk about the importance of having a full-time director of human resources. As Jamie just talked to you about the Fair Labor Standards Act, it's been familiar within that area in being able to advise the rest of the department heads and all of city staff as to requirements of the FLSA as well as family medical leave, workers' compensation. And it also protects the city against EEOC claims, employment discrimination, diversity harassment, gender related issues according to the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. Their time, thereby she'll be taking a more active role in performing these functions. As the board probably is very aware, employee liability cases have a tendency to be on the upswing and I believe that by having a human resource individual that can assist myself as well as the department heads and the employees with any questions that they may have in that arena will be very helpful to the organization in protecting us from further litigation.
Alexa.
Yes.
What kind of, will there be any, any certifications or other technical requirements tied to that?
Yes, at this time, as part of the requirement for the city clerk, the, currently, the current employee is looking at attaining her certification for city clerk status. There's also two additional certifications that can be found on the human resource side. One is through the International Personnel Management Association, also referred to as IPMA. Have a tendency to be a little bit more on the government sector side as well as the Society for Human Resource Management, which is also referred to as SHRM. And they have a tendency to be more on the private sector side. They both have different criteria and different qualifications that are required before you can set for a certification status. Once continuing education courses are required towards that venue and then they're also required afterwards to retain certification status. And as part of the director position, those certifications would need to be attained. Part of that is not only for the organization. The other part, it's just the continued education, which I think is so important, that individuals keep current on employment law, on any type of current legal issues that have, and decisions that have come down that affect the status of the organization in any direction and steps that we might take with employees. And it's just continuing education in that arena. I believe one of the organizations, she will be eligible to sit for that certification within a year. And the other one is within two?
No, both.
Both are within two?
Both are.
Okay. And in the meantime, continuing education courses would be required and of course studying in order to be able to pass for the certification exam, which is pretty expensive. Regarding this, this would be a bump in salary because it is such a large increase. It is my recommendation to the board that you consider half of it in 2012 and the other half in 2013 and it be set at a minimum amount within that range. While the current person in that position has much of the education required, the experience and on-the-job expertise is at a minimum level and therefore I think that it fits accordingly to the job range salary layout from the level. There any questions on that? One of the other items, as I, as I'm flipping through the funds here, I did want to make a note, Shannon brought it to my attention today and I did make a note within his overview that personnel changes in the park fund have been made due to tweaks that he's made in the job schedules, but because of those tweaks that he's made, it's, you're seeing salaries go from $90,000 a year down to $65,000 a year. And what we're hoping to do is instead of having two individuals or three individuals at one time, depending upon of course the spec, how busy the community center or other areas are, we're hoping to reduce that to one and really take advantage of the staffing that we have. The other major change that you will see is the change of community development director to also include the responsibilities of assistant city administrator. In this area, I've talked to Ryan about it and I think because of his experience that he's had with the city and the job performance that he's proven to this board, I think that he is the perfect candidate to look at succession planning, although I think he'll see me here for a long time. I say that with unachieved. I hope that I stay for a long time. I think it's so important to be able to plan for replacement, whether it's in a short absence if I'm gone on vacation or it's when I'm gone because I'm moving to Grand Valley, you still need that continuity of business. And it's very important to have somebody at a level that will be able to assist you with that. Ryan performed those functions and helped Mark Pence tremendously and I'd like to be able to look at bringing Ryan upstairs to start serving at a, still paid at a, at a minimum level for the position. At this time, his job duties would remain, just slightly changed, he'll still be the community development director, however, he will also be taking on some additional roles as backing me up in my absence. He'll also be helping with some of the economic developments that's going to be occurring and because he has a lot of institutional knowledge that's already occurred. So it's just taking that, capitalizing on it and going forward. Now that's not to say that in this situation, in our conversations, the importance of education and Ryan's the first one that will tell you that he is already met with an individual through one of the local universities and is in the process of signing up and will be completing his undergraduate coursework. And part of the requirement for the position will be that he'll have to continue in that endeavor with minimum credit hours in order to retain that position of assistant city Those are the biggest items under personnel, other than to say that in this budget, there are no COLAs included. One of the things that I did refer to in the letter was that I'd like to be able to look at that at mid-year and see where our finances are at, see where property taxes are coming in, see how our sales tax are coming in, see our fees, business licenses, things like that, make sure that people are paying if, because our revenues were so conservative. If at that time, it looks as if our revenues are, because we, we really set our revenues at being flat as to what we projected them to actually be this year. I don't see them going up, but should for some reason we have increased revenues, I'd like to be able to bring that back to the board and have you consider at least at a minimum a one-half to 1 percent total for employees. Any questions on that?
That's on merit, but too.
That would strictly be a cost of living adjustment. Right now, I asked Jamie to review the regional status of cost of living adjustments and over the Kansas City region, the amount for this year is rated at, Jamie?
1.67.
Percent. So it's a very minimal adjustment, but it is an adjustment nonetheless.
It's just the COLA.
Yeah, just the COLA. I wouldn't be looking at merits.
Can I ask a question about the police department personnel salary expense? Why there's so much difference between 2011, 2012?
In 2011 and prior years, for some reason, they had split out the salary line. They had what I would call regular uncommissioned salaries in one line and officer salaries posted to another line. And talking with Aaron, there was no real reason, they didn't need that information. So in 2012, we combined those two line items to one.
Okay, so the 2011 was closer to that $987,000 versus $213,000?
The total.
Yes.
If you look in the police budget on page of your long sheets, page 13. There's two line items there.
Page 13 for the general fund.
So the general fund and then the long sheet. It should be his first section.
So officer salaries was combined then with personnel?
Correct.
For 2012?
Yes.
If not, we can move on and start talking about general expenses, contractual commodities At this point, most of what you'll find in the regular expenses are operating expenses. Very, they are recurring expenses that happen here. Many items under the contractual are maintenance contracts that you'll see, whether it's related to building maintenance, whether it's related to software maintenance for varying kinds of software that we have in-house. And then you've also got other areas such as capital. And I know that a lot of times there's a real interest in capital. So if you have any questions about expenses right now, many of those have been primarily reduced. We can go over them by fund and account or we can just strictly look at capital. I know that some of you have come with prepared questions and if you want, we can look at those. It's however you want to look at it.
Do you have questions? Have questions? I've started. Okay. Was it your intent to go through the book front to back?
Not really. Unless, unless you wanted to, but it was to truly just bring up the highlights of the items that are here. What you'll find is these front sections that are folded over are summary pages and these items back here are the detail pages that show you what the details within those individual object codes or line items are. And because one of the things that when I looked at it, I thought, well, wait a minute, this says office slides. Well, does that mean you're buying your computer toner? Are you buying paper? Are you buying pens? Or you give me a [inaudible]. Or can you give me a general idea of what it is that you're purchasing from there? If you have memberships and subscriptions, memberships to wear, you know. So these pages back here do give you the details. So if, as you're looking, these summary pages are important to see what the totals are, but to see the details, it's, it's important to look in the back of the book. And thanks to Kathy as well as Kalila and staff, they, you've got a table contents page that has a, that shows where the general fund is at and the summary page reference. It's awesome helpful. So Mary, if you'd like to start with your questions?
Let's see, there's twenty-two. I'm gonna start with it. Okay, start with, start, we're starting the dump truck.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, I'm all in favor of, we talked about this last year with, with our snow fiasco and all the equipment started breaking down. And we need, you know, larger vehicles. I guess my question is, can we go a used vehicle, of course, you know, add a fraction of the cost of those, what that was worth?
Yeah, there, there's a possibility of that. MoDOT's actually getting ready to surplus some equipment. And what I would like to do is try to purchase trucks through MoDOT. And if we're able to do that, obviously, it's not going to be that much. What I wanted to do is budget for worst-case scenario. And I know that we can get a dump truck equipped with a, you know, a bin that has a built-in spreader and then a snow pile, pretty much that much.
Well, I mean, I guess in order to bring our fleet up to real speed, first-hand move and stuff, I mean, how many big trucks you think, I mean, totally, we are, we have one right now that's.
Yes, we need one on each route, so we need, if, if this passes through budget, we will still need one the next two years, basically. We'll need two more trucks for a total of four trucks. You know, the problem that we run into, and we saw this last year with the Blizzard, is that when you're out there with a four fifty or a five fifty pickup truck, it's not made, I mean, it's made for parking lots, not residential streets.
So maybe we're down to like basically the big truck at some point.
Big truck and a Bobcat, that's literally all we had. So that's the game point at least.
And in case, well, somebody might take notes, it's, this dump truck's listed under Fund O five, which is transportation, or fifty-five, which is transportation. And the object code is seven four one zero zero, it's towards the back.
I'll, I'll bounce back to it between you guys. Mine's, it's not that bad though. I, I, I talked to Lex about it. I, I know we're getting pretty K nine looking at, at the Tahoe.
Yep.
And then looking at replacing the detective's vehicle, which is currently the Explorer, which Lex told me is a bad transmission, that with the Impala. My question there is, those are the, you know, I'm thinking back to inclement weather. We use those SUVs for inclement weather. Do we really need to replace that detective vehicle with another SUV where we have a vehicle that gets, gets around good in, in bad weather to respond to calls? I guess, I mean, are we going to be hurting for vehicles to respond to calls in bad weather if we don't replace that SUV with another SUV?
We'll still have Officer Amis's vehicle and Detective Vaughn's vehicle, which they're both Durango's four-by-four. I mean, that's about all we'll have, that we should have.
I mean, because the price difference wasn't huge. I'm just thinking, to play it safe on me, do we?
Looking at about six, seven thousand dollar difference in price. Unless for the full-size SUV, I didn't, we didn't really look at the smaller, like.
Because I'm just thinking, because I know that's what they, that's what they run calls in when we have, you know, snow, is they run, you know. Is it, is it Impala for old drive though? It might be, I mean, they might lose that.
Malibu, probably going to be in Malibu. And yeah, it would be, because it's not going to be a police-rated vehicle, it's just a regular vehicle. So more than likely, we'll have a front-wheel drive.
So it'll get along okay.
Yeah, I think it'll probably do all right.
I just want to make sure that we're, we're covered.
Yeah, I mean, you're always going to take a chance on that, but you know, we do limited anyways. And we'll try to always try to keep some kind of a four-wheel-drive vehicle around.
I guess back to, back to the line, uh, street sweeping. Every year, you know, as we budget these amounts for street sweeping, at what point do we just bite the bullet and buy this, buy the thing?
The board would like to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Because I mean, I, I did some research and I mean, they have used refurbished floor tees for thirty grand. I think that we're spending nine, ten thousand dollars a year to contract it out twice. I mean, at some point, it's going to make sense for us to buy the thing to have it.
Yeah, and that's something that we've actually talked about. Alexa brought that up when she was reviewing my budget. I think as of right now, we've just done it because we don't want the ongoing maintenance, have to have an operator trained on that, that piece of equipment. I think going forward, we have to have it for our MS four permit, that's a permit issued to Department of Natural Resources. And it basically regulates all of our waterways. One of the stipulations of that permit is that we have to do street sweeping twice a year. So I think going forward, and especially as Green Valley grows and gets bigger, it's going to be more extensive street sweeping and more often. You know, Blue Springs has a person in the streets week for, you know, set five days a week. So I, I certainly think that that's something we can look into. Whether that's something that we want to do this year or not.
I'm not saying, because I'm saying at some point, we need to, I mean, we're just, you know, rent one, you know, we could have it and do it more than twice a year. So I mean, typically now we do it, we do it one after the winter, get sand and salt, and then one after Fourth of July, get all the fire to breathe. I just thought I'd, I was saying.
Are those heavy-duty enough to push snow?
No, airports isn't do a sweep.
Okay.
Not for you.
Okay, I got one more then for Ryan, and I'll be good, I think, right now. Valve exercising machine?
Yes, sir.
We've talked about valve exercising trailers in the past. Is this the same type of piece of equipment? It's just the, you know, basically exercise the water valves and keeping them from?
Yes, it's, it's not a trailer, not this one that, that we're looking.
But they have trailers, right? I think that's what's, that's in the past, and I think the cost is a lot more with this ones too.
Yeah, they, I'm sure, yeah, they'll sell you anything. This is really the stripped-down, the most basic version of a valve exercising machine that we can get. We're spending this much every year to have a contractor come in and do it. You know, we're about bringing as much in back in-house as possible. I think this is something we can easily do.
Okay, that's obviously a fast one. I know, because it's trailer, we, I don't know, I know that we've had the trailer, I don't even care. Cost of the trailer from the present over the past was pretty high compared to that, yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure this was, you know, seen cheap, I've seen the past, I thought we'll be getting what we need here. Okay. I think it's great.
Got a question for each of you. Under planning and engineering, since that falls under that community development department?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a line item for professional services for thirty thousand dollars. What, what is that called?
What's the, can you give me the number?
It was seven one zero one zero under planning and engineering expenses.
Is it just the master plan by itself? Yeah, I'm sorry, that is the comprehensive master plan for the city. Next year, Lex would like to do a comprehensive plan.
So that's what you were referring to?
Yeah.
Then for Aaron?
Yes, ma'am.
You have the same line item, professional services, you went from five hundred and thirty dollars in two thousand eleven to four, forty thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars in two thousand twelve.
What, the increase? Where am I at here?
That's under police expense.
That, oh, that's through the Jackson County Sheriff's Department, the dispatching. That's why last year, for some reason, we had them under capital expenditures. And it really needs to be under professional services. So that's the majority of the hit there is, is that. And then we also have the CJC MA for eight thousand dollars. So I see, we're going to see management with the combined group.
Don't we pay though for our taxes to belong with Central Jack?
For?
Technically, just to be, I mean. And, and then we add this. I don't understand.
Well, it's a shared cost too. You've got to understand with, with also with Blue Springs, with Tapewingo and with Central Jack. We're, we're like, I think we're probably third in line when it comes to that. Central Jack being, picking up the majority, the biggest chunk of that change as long as, and then with Blue Springs and then us and then Tapewingo. But you're looking at policy development, training, all kinds of good stuff involved. And I'm not talking about cert.
No, no, I understand that.
Or anything like that. I'm talking about emergency management, just in general, so. And we did receive the grant that, that group applied for, and I'm still waiting on, I know we're gonna, this is actually, should be a reduced cost here at some point. What that number's going to be, I don't know yet.
One other question on Kathy.
Any of you here's on?
Yes, you did. With regards to the replacement of the restroom in our strong, is that budgeted anywhere?
Oh, I'll let Shannon.
We, we have remaining dollars in our, going on, on the, for a portion of that for the trailer, a portion of that for restrooms, and hopefully we've got some remaining dollars for the new mission.
No, it's not, it's in the, um, Geo Bond fund. The money is leftover Geo Bond money from two thousand and eight. And we have a page in this long, page forty-four of the long legal pages, which paid forty-four, but it's. The only area of transfer of the funds to the community center to pay the bond payment from the certificate of participation. We were kind of waiting for some of the numbers to come back on some of those projects. But there is a hundred and approximately forty thousand dollars left in there that we paid for the restrooms.
From two thousand and eight?
Correct. As part of the capital for, that's actually within the budget because that was going to be used from the bond issues. On page nine of my cover letter, I kind of tried to give an overview of what some of those capital items for park, parks and recreation. That included some of the replacement bikes at the community center, the surveillance system, cameras at the Mountain Park, and a possible add-on for cameras at the park admin area, maintenance truck and re-rooking of the community center. Now, I will tell you, there is a cost here for the re-rooking of the community center. We are having Midwest Public Risk is actually sending out an adjuster on Thursday to look at the building to determine whether it is from ice damming, the damages caused from ice damming, to determine whether it would be covered under our risk management provider. And if that happens, you'll have an additional thirty-seven thousand dollars in the park department. In talking with Shannon and Kathy earlier today, it would be our recommendation that you take and put that towards reserves for that fund and not spend it.
Bethany, you all have any questions?
I have one.
No?
I have one. The, the pool, Shannon, this for you. I, I know each year you have a outside company coming, a pool management company coming to deal with, taking care of everything. I, I didn't see it in here anywhere.
Yeah, it's, it's a, I don't remember. Zero two dash two six seven one zero one two for pool management.
What was the number you're going to show?
Zero two dash two six dash seven one zero one two. Is that?
Behind section twenty-six, four, and it's forty from the back, point seven.
Is there, I know that's, that's a pretty steep number and I understand the value of having them do it, but is there anything you can do to put the screws to these folks and get a better deal?
You know, there, there may be some things that, that we can do to, to maybe minimize that number a little bit. I know our, obviously, our aquatic center is probably the most heavily-used facility within the given time period over the year. And coupled with the fact of the risk that's involved with having a facility like that. I don't know that another option, we would see much savings. Obviously, this, this pool management firm hires with ingrained knowledge of first, so all of our guards and headguards are all Green Valley kids. But they're responsible for, for not only the, the training of the lifeguards, but they bring in a third party for audits, that audits the lifeguards, both outside the pool area and in the pool area. They're responsible for all the chemistry and making all sure, you know, our, our water chemistry board needs to be, all the chemical, mechanical in the pump room are taken care of. And then we've been very pleased with them, you know, to this point. We still retain concessions within that facility. And those, those staff people are on city payroll, actually, it's just the lifeguards and the, and the head, headguards that oversee that. But the only other route would be the way we did it three years ago in hiring individuals seasonally and then hiring guards. And to get the level of service that we need, both in quality and safety, I don't know that there would be much of a cost savings.
Shannon, one of the other things to consider is, you talked about they ensure that the chemistry level of the water remains.
Balanced.
Balanced, thank you. But they also provide those chemicals, don't they?
That's correct. And that's part of it. It's, it's not just the staffing, it's, it's the chemicals.
And pool chemicals can be very pricey.
Yeah, the equipment repairs, just all around, they're, they're on top of things. And, and Blue Springs uses the West Pool Man, Police Center uses, Independence uses. So they're, they're well-known in the park and recreation industry, doing what they do.
No, I understand. I was just, it's, it's one of those things that we, we talked about it.
Kind of pops out of the fact that you're there.
Year over year, and again, I understand the value of it, so.
Who else have some questions? Anything else you want to, you want to say?
Not at this time. Much of the information I've shared with you in my front letter. One of the larger expenses that you'll see for next year is the comprehensive master plan for the city. But I think it's very important, I just did planning and surveying board. And they concur with that need for, for that service. And the last time one was done for the city was in two thousand, two thousand one. And well, about, I think when I talked to Kenny, it said about three or four years ago, they did do, try to update it. But to actually have an outside company come in, that we can get our community involved and provide feedback as to the direction of the city is really extremely important. And so we, all the departments took a look at it when we determined that it needed to be in there. And then we went volunteer cuts in order to provide you with a balanced budget so that that can be included, and I commend them for that. And with that, those are the highlights.
Do we need to have a digital workshop?
Do we need to have additional workshop to govern this? Is that what you were...
Yeah, if you, it's at the Board's direction discretion. If you want to have another one on Wednesday to ask other questions.
Okay.
So Wednesday night at six o'clock?
Okay. Anything else that's certain budget to see me? If not, we will return from workshop then.